This is one of our pets being prepped for surgery. He has bladder stones, which you can actually feel in there. So we're gonna get those out for her and make her feel better, because those are not supposed to be there.
It's crunchy, but it's also squishy. I don't know. It's sand.
It's like a stress ball with rock sugar. Lea is our first apprentice here at Randhurst Animal Hospital. And the reason that we decided to go ahead with this program is because we thought it was a really great idea that the school district was doing to give students an opportunity to really explore a potential profession, to see if it was something that they really wanted to do. And it also works to our benefit because we get to basically train them from the ground up.
Today was a special day because usually I don't get pulled into surgeries, but today I did and I got to see this 10-year-old dog. She's very little. She had about nine bladder stones that we managed to get out. So it was really cool getting to watch that in the surgery room.
In surgery, her role is really just to observe. She's not going to be doing anything, really participating in surgery, but it's nice for her to have the experience, to be able to see what's going on.
This apprenticeship is really going well for me. Being able to do this apprenticeship while I'm still in high school rather than in college or just later on in life. It's a really good opportunity and it's something that helps me learn before I jump in and it helps me get to know what I want to do. If you're thinking about doing the apprenticeship or you're on the edge, I would just say do it. It's a really good opportunity. You don't get many of these, and take it.
Hi, I'm Carson Coquelinus. I'm going to be a senior and I'm an intern here at the Chambre Boomers. This is a marketing internship set through District 214.
Chambre Boomers.
I'm in a micro internship. One of the cool parts about that is not going to be here for that long, so they're kind of giving me a taste of everything that goes on between promotions or concessions or selling tickets. So they're kind of spreading me out everywhere and I get to see everything that goes on.
So I've worked in baseball for 18 years now and I've had many different intern classes throughout the years. We've almost exclusively been with college-age interns. I know our internship programs over the years have been the source of most of our full-time jobs. And this is my first experience with high school-level interns and that micro internship concept. And it's been, so far, so good. It's been enjoyable to see people get their first taste within the business.
My parents and I both wanted me to do an internship and I knew that not a lot of high schoolers get the opportunity to just see if they even want to work where they think they're working. And it's just a good way to know if you want to continue the path that you're on or look into something else if you don't like it as much. This has been a really cool experience, learning about the business side of sports. And I really enjoy it and thanks for setting it up.
Hi, I am Martha Nava. I'm one of the three art teachers at Rolling Meadows High School. We spoke with the Rolling Meadows Park District earlier in the school year about potentially creating a mural here. We asked our art club students if they were interested in being involved in that and they were very excited. Many of them ride this bike path all the time and we're really thrilled. So what we strive to do with the design is to represent the park district and all that it offers. We didn't want too many different colors, so they're kind of working within the palette of each season. So there's a little color harmony happening. That looks beautiful. For our students, it's certainly awesome to just the activity of doing this, be able to take a challenge, a design problem, and come up with a solution, a visual solution for that. And then what's really special is the icing on the cake that this is hopefully a very long-lasting tribute that they can point to and look at and say, "I was a part of that. I did that."
I love this one. This one is so cool.
One of my favorite parts was especially seeing the people that come through here, seeing really the community that actually uses this underpass.
Hi, kids!
Especially seeing camp kids come through and they're all like, "Oh my gosh, looks so good." We're like, "Aww, they're so cute."
My favorite part is just spending time with friends and people who are as passionate about art that I am.
Today is just a very exciting day because we get to showcase the students and teachers who worked so hard on the Kurchhoff Underpass Mural Project. A lot of hard work went into this and a lot of hot days and it's just unbelievable the amount of talent that this group has if you haven't already seen it. I just want to say thank you to Martha and Kathy, who wasn't able to be here today, and the students who took the time to design, sketch, and paint this mural even as they hit their summer break. The Kurchhoff Underpass Mural!
So this was a wonderful day. We just did the ribbon cutting and it was so exciting. How many people came out, not just from administration, from District 214 and the Rolling Meadows community? We had the mayor, parents, neighbors and community members, and the artists themselves. It was awesome. It was really exciting. We're really proud and so are they.
Hi, my name's Rhea. Today we're here at Northwest Community Hospital. I'm going into senior year of high school and I'm working as an apprentice.
Hi, Sue. I put the sit-to-stand lift, I put it in the therapy gym for you.
Northwest Community was very interested in working with District 214 with this apprenticeship program. I figured it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring a student onto the unit and expose them to what we do here in the hospital. It's a great learning opportunity for students here. Great experience right off the bat. And of course, the extra help in the hospital setting is certainly appreciated.
Hi, I'm gonna do your blood pressure. I'm on the rehab unit right now, so I learn a lot about stroke victims, brain injuries, things like that, and basically how to care and aid for patients who have weakness or they have aphasia where they can't talk. I took the CNA class at Hersi, my high school. We did it at the school and I think it definitely helped me because the entire class was training on how to be a CNA slash PCT. So everything I learned, I use all that education every day while here at my job.
Your pressure is 137 over 85.
One of my favorite things to do throughout the day is just talking to patients and making sure everything's in check and if it's not, I'll help them get there and make sure everything's alright. Throughout being an apprentice and getting my CNA license and being a PCT here at the hospital, it definitely helped me realize that I want to pursue the medical field and I hopefully want a future in nursing.
Hi, I'm Nico and I have an internship at The Bakester. This is one of my favorites, the quiche. Normally when I come in for a day, I'll go to the back and I'll either start making cookies or some kind of cookie bar, whatever it is that day. One of my jobs here is making cookies. I just got finished making these ones. These are chocolate chip cookies. Later in my adult life, I'm hoping that maybe I'll open a bakery or bed and breakfast or something that just is really similar to this and having a lot of things that you're able to put together and create something. And this is just a great experience on a lot of different areas. It's the business end and seeing how to manage it in reality. And then also just experience with baking things in this quantity is something I've never done before, so it's been really interesting in both ways. I've really enjoyed just the feeling of getting to bake a bunch of stuff and then seeing it actually be out and being sold and then it's actually being put forward and earning a profit for it is really just satisfying to me.
Thank you.
By having this internship, I feel like I'm more confident that I would really enjoy working in a bakery or working in the food industry just because it's hard to imagine what the industry is like in reality. But then once you experience it firsthand, I think that it really will help you going forward to know what you want to do rather than committing to something and then realizing, "Oh, I don't like this" later in life.
Today is orientation, so all the freshmen that are new to the school were just coming in here, getting settled, getting hyped.
I'm really excited to play sports and go to football games and go to activities.
I'm looking forward towards making a lot of new friends because DG is so much bigger.
It's nerve-wracking, but in a good way because it's a bigger school, there's more people, which also means more new friends, just more opportunities overall.
Oh my gosh, this day is huge. I always get really nervous before this day and then when it's happening, it's just this beautiful scene coming out in front of you. So these kids are immediately welcomed. Basically, they are no stranger when they walk through these doors. When school starts, they've already been embedded in our community.
I mean, almost everything, but I'm really looking forward to trying out for sports, like football and baseball and then also new classes.
I'm looking forward to the classes, like the law, all the sports I'm gonna do.
Every time a class comes there, there's so much potential. There's state champions, there's artists, there's musicians. And really that limitless potential and watching it materialize over four years, man, that's really rewarding and hugely exciting.
Hi, my name is Delica Grochek and I graduated from Buffalo Grove. I started as an intern in January of this year and I've been here ever since. I've just always been really interested in dermatology as my specialty and being here and seeing everything, it just really reiterated my passion for medicine and passion for surgery and dermatology. The way I started is I actually started at the front desk before I got all my clinical experience. And I just started by making appointments and interacting with patients on their way to checkout and just seeing what copays and dealing a lot more with insurances and getting a feel for the more bureaucratic side of it. Arlington Dermatology invested in me and tutored me and they trained me to do the nurse schedule here, which is light and laser treatments. And they've let me shadow a doctor or surgeon and be in their rooms for that and that's something that you're not going to find anywhere else. They really took a chance on me, a girl right out of high school who's interested in medicine with not a lot of experience. I would definitely recommend doing an internship. I know that D214 has awesome programs, not only for medicine, but also for a lot of different areas. And I think it's just such an awesome opportunity not only to make connections with patients and with people, but also for yourself to learn. And I definitely highly recommend it.
Today's a very special day. We are, for the first time, having a district bake-off. That's something that's never happened before, but I think it is a very cool opportunity to bring the culinarians together and to also add a little bit more pressure to making sure that their products come out correctly when you have some type of a competition added to it.
So the actual bread is very pretty?
Yeah. The teachers decided that we were going to do a quick sweetbread and then the savory yeast breads. I feel like it's very cool to have a district-wide support for Family and Consumer Sciences and I know that doesn't happen in lots of different districts. And so I'm really grateful that they see the value of what we're doing and supporting it in this kind of a way.
This is outstanding.
Honestly, it's tough competition.
But the fact that these students have managed to complete their bread, got here on time, ended up making them good is accomplishment in itself. And then to be able to say that you've served a state senator, that you've served somebody who's been on Food Network, that you've served real restaurant owners is something that not many teenagers can have.
I like to bake.
We're good.
Thank you. Good evening. Want to call to order the committee of the hall meeting for the Township High School District Board of Education for Thursday, October 12, 2023. Please call and roll.
Desling.
Here.
Birido.
Here.
Heineman.
Present.
Palmer. Rauck. Walker.
Here.
And Kreitzer.
Present. Now, in present, we have... Thank you. I would like a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, volunteers, or of legal counsel for public body. Five IOCS, 122C1. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Please call and roll. Birido.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Desling.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye.
Thank you. We should be back at seven. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We are back from closed session. We're reconvening in open session. Please call a roll.
I'm sorry. There we go. Leslie.
Here.
Dorito.
Here.
Heineman.
President.
Palmer. Rauch. Here. Walker.
Here.
And Quintero.
Present. Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Believation.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every people and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So this is our first committee at the whole meeting. And welcome everyone. And the first approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some of them.
Wait a second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. There's been a motion and a second and discussion.
My computer, I can't hold on a second.
It's okay. Bierito.
Yes.
Rauch.
Hi.
Dussling.
Sure.
Heineman.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Kreitzer.
Aye. Motion packed with six zero.
Thank you. Uh, no one signed up for public comments?
That's correct.
Thank you. So now, here we go, first time. Thank you. Uh, so first order of business is from the business services. Does anyone have any comments or talk to Associate Superintendent Tim Keely about accounts payable 7.1? Hearing none. How about 7.2 Monthly Finance Report? No comments? Okay, 7.3 A Contract.
I have a couple comments.
Yep, I want Tim to get a little update on that. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we're providing you with some background on a potential contract with a company called Truveris. Truveris provides pharmacy benefit audit services, essentially. We were made aware of Truveris. For perspective, we do have about eight, eight and a half million dollars a year in pharmacy claims in our, our health program. So the savings could be significant, and that would get back to what we talked about last month with our health insurance premium increases. It would certainly help the cost of the program. What we're going to be proposing next week as an action item is the contract with Truveris. It comes at a cost of $85,000 a year. And it would also, we negotiate a termination clause that if in 2000, by 2024 plan year, if we're not seeing the savings that we discussed in our meetings, we have the ability to walk away with them with no fault. In addition, on top of auditing our current claims, they would also assist us with going out to market for our pharmacy benefit program. And unlike when we did this past year through Gallagher where we were essentially combined with main 207, and they were, they were trying to find commonalities with our programs, we have the opportunity to set the program how we want. So Mr. Dussling, be aware, when we talk at the insurance meeting, we talk about disruption. What impact does that have on, on our employees when we change the plan? We can dictate that there's no disruption, that the plan is like for like, and we're simply looking for another provider. So there's a lot of exciting things ahead for our, our health plan, specifically pharmacy. At this point, I could answer any questions you might have about Truveris.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bierito?
Uh, first, I like the idea of the early termination clause. I think that's great. So the questions I had was the savings at Glenbrook 225. You gave a percentage basis, but I was looking more for the dollars. Um, and also the fact that Glenbrook 225 is much smaller than we are. So I'm hopeful that if it, you know, we think it's 20% for them, their cost, their savings are going to be minute compared to what we would say.
They are significantly smaller than 214 in terms of belly buttons, as they say in the industry. In the initial meeting with Truveris we had over in main 207, the CSBO from 225 was there and was sharing his latest quarterly. And again, they've been on for about two, two and a half years, meaning their provider is on notice. They know that everything's being looked at. So you would imagine that the findings would be less than initially.
Sure.
And so in that quarter, the most recent quarter, there was about $30,000 savings for them. So again, looking at $85,000 a year for the fee, we feel confident that we'll be able to clutch that. But again, to your point, we can, we can terminate with no fault. All right, thank you, Tim.
Anyone else? Mr. Heineman?
Does Truveris just look for mistakes or whatever that are good for us? Or do they look for also where we under insure somebody and we owe them more money?
Uh, not necessarily. They're specifically looking from a claims basis. And so they're looking for situations where the provider did not pay the claim to the fullest. So any delta there would be, would come back as a savings to our plan. It was interesting when talking to them, they actually audited the state of New Jersey. They have a, a large plan. And they were talking millions and millions of dollars in savings. And so to me, this seems like kind of an obvious thing. It's, it's worked really well with Glenbrook. In addition, 211 and 207 are looking to ratify the contract and use it in coming year. My hope is that we can get that benefit out of it. And, uh, you know, really, when you do something like this, in, in my mind, the providers should then realign to the contract and know that it's being watched a little bit better, which again, in the long run, should provide savings and confidence that the plan is running as it should. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Is anyone down to... We, we know that, you know, they look for things and it kind of went to the way that, you know, eventually it comes down. In, in our business, we have freight companies that do that. They'll come in, they'll audit. But there's some that audit that don't fix anything. They just report it. It's like an annuity. So they keep on going, they turn it and burn it, and okay, 20% is still making up. It sounds like Truveris actually goes in and tries to correct the activity for future years. Is that how you see it?
They do, but they're correcting existing claims. So they'll, they'll give us the ammunition to go back through SCRAMP to the pharmacy benefit manager to seek those refunds back onto the plan. Again, to your point, yes, you would hope that future claims would be processed correctly. I'd like to think the best in people, but it certainly is no big industry. And, you know, Truveris is probably doing pretty well because these providers come to a great job.
No, no doubt. It's the integrity of the company that's auditing, right? It's only as good as the last person that touches it, so. Okay, thanks for the clarity.
Any more, Ms. Warner? Mr. Dussling?
You know, based on the, the amount of dollars that are in pharmacy billings and, and sales, and, and, you know, we're, we're showing that as well with the increases that we have. I, I think this is a great thing to do. I really do. I compliment John because it gives us a chance to, to add that extra look. Gives us a chance to get things correct, and it gives us a chance looking forward to what we're going to have to do with the benefit committee and, and, and all represent populations and all employees to make sure that we're doing the right thing and getting, getting the right costs so that we can provide the right benefits going forward. Absolutely. I support it.
Ms. Rohn?
Tim, can you just walk me through this a little more? I'm sorry, I'm a little new to this. So this is a benefit to our staff because they will identify, I think you mentioned something like false claims, 20% in false claims. So I, I have a prescription. I, I go and I'm only supposed to pay, say, 10%. So it's a hundred dollars, I pay 10%, but they charge me 20% instead of the 10%. So this company will identify that that claim was improperly charged? Or how, can you give me a, a real example?
Yes, so this is generally not, we're not speaking on co-pays. So, so the, the client facing, the member facing costs are generally fine. There may be some issues there, but usually members kind of tease that out at, at the, at the register. What this is, is the, the insurance portion, the insurance payment that goes to the pharmacy provider from our plan. So obviously, your co-pay is the first part, but then the plan pays the balance. And so it's determining whether or not the correct balance is being charged, whether or not we're... There's also, again, if, if you all want to fall asleep, I can explain pharmacy. Well, I can't really because it's hard to explain. But there's also rebates coming back. So, you know, the, the manufacturers are kicking rebates in. So they're also checking to make sure the correct rebates have come back. So it really is a multi-dimensional process, but it is mostly what's coming out of the plan, which, uh, you know, in the long run, does impact our premiums, which will come back to the consumer. But, but truly, it is, it is plan dollars to talk about.
Okay, and so if we did not hire this company, we would have to have someone internal because this isn't being done currently within the district. So we would have to either hire an additional person to do this as a benefit to the district for the future plans as well as benefit to staff? Or we'd have a third party or we just couldn't do this?
Sure. You'd have to hard hire a, a couple of medical coding builders, probably. And not sure if they'd be able to handle the volume. Truveris has, you know, software that runs all of this. Some of the other solutions we looked at, they only take sample sets, almost like our financial auditors. They'll take 10%, it looks good. If it doesn't, they pay 20%, et cetera. Truveris will do every single claim and run them back through our contract so that we know that it's all done with that.
Okay, so that, and then, so are we paying for the software then as well as the service or?
It's, it's a consultancy. It's all...
However they do it? Okay, so they'll have access to all of our staff's pharmaceutical and everything and insurance, okay? And when they do find that there's a discrepancy, then they identify it, they list it, they send it to us? We have to go then talk with the insurance company or do they take on from there? Where does it go next?
So the initial look that they'll do on the current plan year, and we're a calendar plan year, so they'll look at 2023. Most likely, by the time this gets approved, executed in November, they're probably looking at, you know, through September 30. Moving forward, it's a quarterly basis. We get a quarterly report, and then that is automatically reported back to the pharmacy benefit manager, reconciled and verified, and it, it comes off of our next bill, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Walker, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, you touched on it at the end. I just want to make everybody at home understand. Where does that money, the $85,000 we spend to get the money back, what happens with the money that we get back?
Goes right into our plan and, and in future years, when we're most looking to determine our rate structure, you know, let's say X percent is the renewal, whatever savings we get chips away that, that renewal and that is all.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarity.
Yeah, this is the first time that the district has done this, so I was, um, I was really kind of like, why, why haven't we done this in the past? Do you have any additional comments, Dr. Rowe, about this? No? Okay, great, then we'll, this will come back at our meeting next week for approval. Moving on, let's see, 7.4 Spyglass Group. Mr. Keely?
Okay, so audit is the theme here. And I will fully admit that, that both Spyglass and Truveris were on District 214's radar before I was an employee. So I'm just following through on what our staff has already worked on. Spyglass is another audit firm. They look at our, our telecom billing, essentially. And again, looking for errors in billing, phone lines, data lines, et cetera, that are, you know, stale, that aren't being used. And then they provide us with that. This is a one-time process. We, essentially, once this process is complete, the contract terminates. Spyglass will present us with a list of findings and options, and we have the option to accept or not accept any of those items. So the question is, well, why wouldn't you accept something they find? And one of the things that, that has come up, Schaumburg 54 was saying that there were some lines that were essentially backup lines, and they didn't want them removed. They could have meant savings, but they strategically needed them. So this is, this is kind of a one-shot deal. We're looking at probably doing it maybe every five years. There's no cost to us. The cost of their work will come out of any savings they find. Schaumburg 54, York Bill, where Mr. Vargas was prior to 214, used it with success. And so again, we'll be presenting that for approval next week.
Any comments for? Okay, thank you. Let's see. Disposable, disposal of surplus gymnast equipment. Anyone have any comments about this? Go ahead.
Okay, um, first question I had was what schools have the equipment? Chris?
This is a joint effort here. Five of the six schools have equipment.
Five of the six schools.
We really do not have a board to manage.
Okay, um, do we know if the park districts will be willing to buy the equipment? I know in the, the write-up it mentioned, you know, possibly they're paying for fair market value or possibly donating the equipment, so.
When you declare something as, if I could, when you declare something as surplus, is the act of the board approving the fact that it's surplus, then finding a, a partner of potential either donation or a purchasing partner would come after this action? So they probably don't have that intention.
Okay. Uh, and then the last question I had, it mentioned something about reduced rental rates at American Gymnastics Academy. I, I didn't know what that, what that was.
So Hershey entered into a one-year agreement this year to use that facility for girls' gymnastics.
Okay, instead of using the, the school?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And can you explain that why?
So the benefit of using the facilities for practices, so these facilities are truly built to house gymnasts where we're making, you know, spaces work, essentially. All of their meets will happen at Hershey High School. So this is just a trial to see if our kids enjoy this experience going to a facility that is built to house gymnastics.
Anyone, Ms. Rohn?
So we've identified that everything listed here is considered a surplus in our district that we were provided?
Yes.
There's an attachment.
Right, and, um, we've obviously had this equipment for some time. I, I have numbers dropped in, in the use or why would we have as much, why, why all of a sudden has this been identified as a surplus?
Boys' gymnastics was eliminated by the IHSA. This is mostly boys' gymnastics equipment.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just like trying to sell used business furniture. You know, you can't get anybody to buy it. You're, it's going to be tough to, tough to sell this stuff because...
Well, potentially, but I, I'll share. I was going to save it for next, next week. It's just a part of my update. But I'll happy to offer it to you now. You may remember, um, the last time the, the board did a, declared a surplus back in January, you surplus a number of trucks that were, that were purchased prior to, to be used for snow removal. Determine that we were no longer going to plow our own facilities in a partner. Those trucks were declared surplus. Mr. Keely, Mr. Yuley pursued that, the sale of those trucks, and they have all been sold to a number of public entities in the area. Actually, the district actually made $6,000 on, on those vehicles. So, um, not that we're looking to, to make money necessarily, but we don't have the space to keep them. And we may be able to not only help a program or help a gym, that we may have a mutual benefit and forming relationships all the way.
Absolutely.
Along the same lines, part of the problem, which Chris could probably relate to as well, is that the reason for the downfall of the gymnastics programs at a high school level is like many other sports in that club sports have really much, you know, they're at the top of the chain and everybody else is just losing business. So while we have this surplus equipment, there is a possibility that we might find some clubs that might want the equipment as well. Thank you.
I think, I think IHSA determined there were less than 5% of the schools in the, in the state participated in gymnastics. They have a threshold for each sport, and they obviously didn't make this one, and so that's why they're, we don't have IHSA sanctioned boys' gymnastics anymore. Okay, thank you.
One quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
What value on the equipment we're talking on?
I don't have an exact number, but we do look at our fixed asset inventory reports when we do this. So as Dr. Rowe said, with the vehicles, some were naturally, it was, it was local public entities. And then the final truck, we put on public surplus, which is a public domain. So again, Mr. Yuley and I talked about that. When there's a public entity that's, you know, a partner of the district, we, we look to, to make that work, and fair market value is a very broad term. So we'll be clear that we're fair with all parties on that. And then we have decided that anything that was remaining after that, if it's scrappable, if it's scrapped, or if it's of value, go on public surplus. But as Dr. Rowe said, you're going to be reviewing and approving a resolution next week, which provides a subsequent benefit discretion, and unless there's direction from the board, we'll continue with that strategy.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what do we have next? Budget calendar. You're still up.
Hey, last, the last one, no, not on your hair. So on an annual basis, we provide this to the board. I reviewed it against last year's budget calendar. The only thing that changed was where the dates lie on the calendar. This outlines the process, which starts in the month of October to monitor the current year budget and at the same time, start developing next year's budget. So there's some milestones in there. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I will, I'm happy to report that Mr. Vargas and I have had four of these meetings so far in the buildings. They've been very productive. It's a good opportunity for the new guy to get out there and meet some folks, but also to really understand from our building administrators how they see the budget and what the needs for their school are. but also to really understand from our building administrators how they see the budget and what the needs for their school are.
Comments? Okay, thank you. Eight point one, snow removal. Dr. Rowe?
Right, I'll kick it over to Mr. Yuli to handle this bid.
Thank you. Uh, we are seeking a one-year contract extension with our two service providers, that is LinkedIn and Tolar. Uh, we each kind of split up the district, each had a handful of schools. The operations department is happy with the services and the two vendors have both agreed to a zero percent price increase for this year.
Questions, comments?
Quick question, Mr. Yuli. Has staff been satisfied with the snow removal at all the schools or places?
Yes, we have a comprehensive process that each of our buildings and ground supervisors go through when they assess each snow or ice event. Uh, and then our assistant director of operations reviews that information and connects with both vendors. It's an ongoing process.
All right. And they feel that they arrive early enough and everything is cleared on time?
Generally speaking, yes, but that is something we absolutely are aware of.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't have a question, just a comment. I, I like the idea of re-upping with the both vendors. I think if we were to put all of our egg, proverbial eggs in one basket, we could run into trouble, so.
Yeah, great job.
Okay, thank you. So we have eight point two, eight point three, and eight point four are all trips students are taking to Japan, not only Switzerland, Germany, and to, um, let me see, Belgium, Switzerland, and France. I don't know if you want to take these individually or how would you like to handle this, Dr. Rowe?
Right there, Mr. Yuli, who's been working on this for us.
It's that type of year.
Yeah, they're all essentially the same.
Yeah, Mr. Free, we, we come to the board about six months out, um, seeking final board approval. This process has been ongoing for over a year. Um, so we have entered into master agreements with three travel providers, Bob Rogers, ACES, and Explorica. So a couple of these trips are ACES and one is Explorica. Uh, so everything's been vetted well in advance and this is the final approval of these three trips.
Comments, Board members?
I have a question. I was at the Italian luncheon at Prospect and I noticed they weren't on here. Is it like something separate?
The exchange program?
Yeah, exchange program.
So I think that is students coming from Italy to Prospect. That's not, this is our students.
But the table I was sitting at, the students were, the students were on the table, so the Italian students were on the left side.
Yeah.
Prospect boys were on the right side. And I thought from what I heard at spring break, that the boys on the right side and all the other people that were in the room would be going to Italy for 10 days. So is that something different outside of this?
I'll have to double check that.
Okay.
That is a little different than this, that's more than.
I figured as much, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I would definitely follow.
Okay.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead.
As we've done in past, that insurance is optional for these, uh, for the parents?
So we've, we've built in a minimum level of insurance. And that was one of the issues that we've walked through the last couple of years. So all of the conditions are the same. It is, it, there's a minimum level and then there's two additional options to, for parents to provide additional coverage.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dusseling, that was actually my question as well. Um, and I, I know that, Mr. Yuli, you've worked with these companies and thoroughly vetted them and have standard protocols so that, you know, especially coming out of COVID and if there are any, you know, future things that we can't expect, that, that you've addressed that in the contracts and everything covered with the insurance. All right, thank you.
Just one quick follow up.
Go ahead.
Mr. Yuli, just for a follow up, so it's heard again and again. The opportunity for students across the three buildings for the same trip is the same, right?
Yes.
The school doesn't fund one more?
No, no, and what you see there is them joining forces so they can go on a trip and have the minimum participants required.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think you're still up, Mr. Yuli. Mechanical equipment purchase contract for Elk Grove.
So this is seeking pre-approval on a cooperative purchase related to the summer 24 construction project at Elk Grove for the student services offices and the culinary lab renovation. Um, so as we work through construction projects, we have to be very aware of lead times. Uh, and so we are trying to get ahead of our bidding process and this is one of the ways that we can procure equipment is through a purchasing cooperative. And that's exactly what this is.
So, um, when Dr. Rowe talked about the, um, the vehicles that we just sold for surplus, they were bought through a cooperative. And according to, um, law, we don't have to, in open session, approve a purchase from a cooperative. But moving forward, um, we've heard loud and clear that, um, the public should know that we are, uh, purchasing through a cooperative and, and it's, it's all the, um, legal steps have been taken. So why don't you give a little bit of update about purchasing a cooperative and why school districts do it?
Well, I think that, Mr. Yuli, correct me if I, if I misspeak here, but the, the, the purchasing through cooperative allows you to, uh, the state has vetted out the, uh, the cost. So instead of going through the bidding process, the state who has much, much stronger purchasing power than individual district does, vets out the cost and says, and pre-approved by membership to a cooperative, um, your, the state is validating the purchase price that's a fair price for public entity to, to buy into. And in terms of bringing, bringing forward, it just doesn't follow the same bidding process. Uh, but we bring that to, to the board for transparency, especially for purchases of this, of this side. So that way, uh, it's discussed and understand the, the source of where the, the product is coming from and how much it costs for. Mr. Yuli, is there any, any to add or?
No, I would agree, and, and a lot of these purchasing cooperatives expand nationwide. And so we're pooling our purchasing power as governmental entities.
Right, it's definitely to our benefit to purchase through a cooperative. We do save a lot of money. Um, and so with, um, cooperative purchases moving forward though, they will be brought before, before the board. Okay, um, any questions on this?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So through the cooperative, we are actually dealing with the cooperative and have no decision over the manufacturer that's fulfilling the bid. Is that correct?
No, I think it's, it's the opposite. We get, we get full discretion and I'll also kick it to Mr. Keeley, who has a lot of experience in this realm as well. But we get, we get to choose, uh, we have a lot more, um, incentive power to make those choices. Um, so it's very strategic on our end.
I think when you're, when you're in a bidding process, you know, you, you take the lowest bidder. When you're in a cooperative, you have the ability to, uh, to understand who your partner is a little bit more and they've vetted out by that, that cooperative. So you can not only get, you know, a, a price that, that is, is very competitive and, and should equal that in the bidding process, but you're also knowing who your partner is, the quality and service of, of something that's come along. And Mr. Keeley asked the question, if this is a, a trained product of, of why, why train? And the answer was, is most of our systems are trained in, in a relationship with training for, for many years. And the, the example that he used, now about Steve Thunder, to get this question, was if I buy a Toyota, I'm not going to put a Ford part in it. So all of our systems that communicate with one another, communicate on that training platform. And if we introduced a different product through the bidding process, we may have a real, real challenge and our systems may struggle, like they were speaking different languages. Put the.
I just want to, yeah, no, one more thing from our experience, uh, in the past district
that, you know, with supply chain issues, et cetera, um, this allows us a lot more control. When you go out to bid, yes, you can get whatever you're looking for, you can be very specific. However, you're bidding through, uh, you know, a general contractor, through a sub. You're, you're a couple of degrees of separation. So what we found is buying through a cooperative, we're the, we're the end user, we're cutting the purchase order. The board controls that, uh, that contract and that purchase. So, um, it's much easier for us to manage it. We're not playing the telephone game. Um, but, and again, to Dr. Rowe's point, um, you're able to get exactly what you want. It is a nationally bid contract, sometimes in our state, sometimes in others. Uh, but, you know, what happens then is they, you know, the, the manufacturer, in this case, Train, are beholden to, is it Omni, Mr. Yuli, that we're buying this one off of?
Correct.
Right, so they're beholden to that entire cooperative, which is thousands of public entities. So it's a little different than just, you know, buying, you know, for 214, we're a big entity, but really the name of all public entities in the cooperative are on that.
Okay. Have a good day. Oh, okay, Mr. Yuli. Reheat boiler replacement.
Yes, this is a traditional bid. Um, so this one has been vetted, uh, and this is for, uh, work on the re, reheat boiler system, um, which involves some mechanical work, um, to help support HVAC in the main office area. So you'll see the bid packages in this one, we do have to accept the lowest bidder and that is the one highlighted. So we will be coming back for final approval on that.
Comments?
I have a question. Um, just out of curiosity, have we had past experience with any of the contractors that bid?
Great question, I'll just get back to that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Building automation cooler at Wheeling.
Thank you, this is another, uh, purchasing cooperative with Train. Um, so much like, uh, the previous conversation, this one is more related to the control side of things. And so when we talk building automation, that allows us to control our systems with efficiencies. Uh, and so we've done a few of these projects here at Forest View and also at Hershey. And so we have a phased approach and we're working through the district. So Wheeling High School is next up for the building automation controls.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Now we go to Dr. Lopez, Khan Academy contract. So why don't you give a little bit of background of what Khan Academy is? And then go into, uh, this contract, okay?
Sure. Well, Khan Academy is a nonprofit educational organization that's been around for just under 20 years. Uh, students, particularly if they're studying for the SAT or even just reviewing content, they're able to go online and access sort of video series. It, it has a lot of research behind it and it's had a significant impact on students sort of preparing for the SAT. Um, regarding this agreement, we've used Khan Academy in our school district for many years. Uh, we are, uh, going into an agreement, a subscription service for the district level access that gives us access to any time any of our students log on and are using any of those services so that we have data also to strategically utilize it, uh, in all our schools. Um, and then the last piece of it, which is unique for this year, is our staff was really, uh, our, our staff leaders were really encouraged to try to utilize, uh, the other element of service that it's providing now, which is a platform that includes a tutoring platform, leveraging ChatGPT. And so, uh, it may seem like it's been a lot longer than it is, but it was November 30th of 2022, less than one year ago, that ChatGPT sort of showed its face, it's less than a year. Um, our staff and our administrators really want to understand the impact that's going to have. Uh, the power of this particular agreement is it provides a training opportunity, professional development, uh, so that they can, our teachers can learn the space, uh, and be ahead of, ahead of the field in trying to understand how this is going to impact, uh, education moving forward. So the subscription service gives our teachers, administrators, and students access to, to this platform. We are using Ester funds to, to pay for this. We'll still have Ester funds this year and next year. Um, and then we'll determine if we're going to continue a, a portion of this subscription moving forward.
So how you, how would you evaluate this?
So every school has identified cohorts of students, uh, and staff that are going to participate in the professional development experiences. And they do want to do a comparison of students that have access to this versus those that, uh, aren't accessing that directly in class to see if it has an impact on their performance on our state assessments. And also grades, I would also add grades, they'll look at as well.
Right, right, okay. Comments, Mr. Rowe?
Dr. Lopez, so we currently use Khan Academy, correct?
We do. It's a, they charge, and it is a nonprofit, but they charge to have a district level subscription. Um, so right now, we don't necessarily have access to the assessments that students are doing directly on the Khan Academy. Uh, so you're paying for a fee to have access to their service. And they, and they have a, uh, an individual that's dedicated to, to us and to our district that will provide the data that our staff then will be able to use to, to analyze.
Oh, okay, so they'll, they'll provide the data now, so, okay. Um, and do you foresee then a requirement or an expectation that teachers will use this? I mean, I do know that teachers currently use this in students, like you said, S and T practice. But do you see setting an expectation or, or?
So the, the leaders who were driving this, that were interested in asking us to provide this resource to them, have staff that, uh, are excited and interested in trying to investigate this further. You know, those staff members that want to be at the lead, leading edge of technology. Um, and they've asked to engage with this and that, and that's where we're going to start is with those people that want to explore. And one more group are coaches, our KLS, who are our coaches at all of our stu, schools, our instructional coaches. Uh, we've also identified them as someone that really needs to investigate both the, uh, all aspects of the platform and what it could do for our students.
Okay, so you would say that this came, the suggestion primarily came from?
Came from our building administrators, the, our instructional leaders, APIs, and our division heads that, um, are looking at every angle, every benefit that we can give them, uh, for students to succeed.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Just a quick, quick comment. I know we have a very high, highly skilled and highly respected cybersecurity staff, but there is a great concern about cybersecurity once it gets out into the general population, uh, system like ours. So once the students get it, are we addressing that as we're looking at this?
You know, I think that's a good question. I, I, I know it's an independent platform that's not housed in our network. Um, I know Chris isn't necessarily here, I think, to maybe answer that, that question, but, um, it's not housed in our network, this is Khan Academy's network. So just like we access any other, any website where there's a login, a single sign-on for a subscription into, um, I don't know that that gives them access into our network, but I'd have to ask and defer to Chris and tech to ensure that we're being protected.
Just a point of follow up, I'm sure Chris is on and on.
Yeah, thank you.
I just would like everybody at home to understand that.
Yes.
This is not going to be a threat to us.
Okay, thank you. I don't expect it will be, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Hyden?
Could you give a quick description of Khan Academy and Khan Migo?
Yes, so Khan Academy is sort of their, their general set of tools and video series that they have. Khan Migo, um, I haven't personally experienced it because we haven't started the subscription, uh, but what's been demonstrated, and I can share with the board, uh, there's some videos online where Sal Khan sort of discusses this. And the way he describes it is, it's almost like a chat tutor, but that this, this tutor, the way that they programmed it, uh, doesn't necessarily give you the answer like you're saying, how do you add this together, how do you perform this particular computation? That it's actually, will give you prompts and say, well, and ask questions to sort of direct, just like a regular tutor would be, that it gives you prompts to sort of guide you to the answer and, and provide some type of feedback and affirmation if you're correct or additional questions if you're not correct. And so it is a potentially powerful tool because it's done within this contract of an educational platform that's sort of controlling, um, for those things that we would expect in normal sort of tutoring situation. Um, and so part of it, uh, we're certainly interested to see what the impact is and, and it would be able to be used in any content that the student's working on, although our focus is on math.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dusseling?
How does this fit in with the other programs that we have for, for students like AIM?
Yes.
And, uh, all the other programs? I mean, I'm getting the sense that this is another tool in our bag and, and I don't know how many tools we got in the bag or is there talking to one another or, or what's going on? Because if I was a teacher, I wouldn't know whether to go to Khan Academy, AIM, or whatever else. So I, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Um, here's what I will say is that our, our AIM program really is focused on our, on our freshmen, right? And so, uh, the focus in this particular program is working with teachers that are, uh, is working with teachers that are at the sophomore and junior level to utilize this as a tool for them. So those teachers aren't necessarily involved in it. It's a separate program. And so they are spam scanning to ensure that we're providing any tools, resources, and materials that could provide an advantage to help our students accelerate and catch up. So it is a different population, and it's also one that teachers sort of are opting in and asking to participate in as a resource. And it did come from our buildings asking us to provide it to them.
Thank you. Good explanation. I actually met Mr. Khan years ago when he started Khan Academy. Yeah. Okay. What do we have left? We have a job description. Okay, correct. I think we all have a copy of the modifications to the job description for Director of Operations. Any comments? Hearing none. This will come back to us at the October 19 meeting. Any other comments, Dr. Rose?
None for me.
Okay, good to go. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Please call the world. Here we go.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dussling.
Yes.
Hyman.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
And Kreitzer. Aye. Thank you, and good evening.